Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August thirteenth meeting of the Board of Selectmen. If you could rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. We've got a pretty packed agenda tonight, so let's jump right in. First up, the minutes of the regular meeting of July ninth.
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Next up, Valley Green Grow. So for those at home, we're discussing approving and releasing and redacting the executive session minutes. That lawsuit is completely over for those following on at home. So everything that is not legally obligated to be redacted can be. So I would love if the board would like to take it in its entirety, but I will defer to the wishes of the board.
Mr. Chair, per your request, I move to release all of those minutes mentioned in the agenda unredacted.
Thank you. Do I have a second for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
Yep.
Next up, Community Relations Announcements in Open Forum. Ms. Zarowski.
Our new rep John Marcy will hold an office hours on Tuesday, August fourteenth, from five thirty to seven PM, and that's gonna be in the gazebo on the Town Common. The treasurer collector's office will be closed August thirteenth to the fifteenth, and that's for the annual school, for the annual school. State primary election, Tuesday, September third, and that's at Heritage School, seven to eight PM. Sample ballots on Town Clerk's page. Last day to register for vote is Saturday, August twenty-fourth, Town Hall, in Town Hall nine to five PM. In-person early voting is at a Selectmen's Meeting Room. Saturday, August twenty-fourth is from nine to five. Monday, August twenty-sixth is eight to five. Tuesday, August twenty-seven, eight to seven. Wednesday, August twenty-eight, eight to five. Same hours on Thursday, on August twenty-ninth. Please return mail-in ballots to the Town Clerk, preferably before the deadline of eight PM on the election day. You can mail, use Dropbox at Town Hall, or hand-deliver to the Town Clerk. Upcoming programs at the Charlton Library. Respect Your Elder Workshop, that's on Tuesday, August twentieth, six to seven thirty, in a community room. Cornerstone Concert Series, Hungry Town, that's on Thursday, August twenty-second, six thirty to seven thirty, and that's in a Dexter Hall. Additional parking is available across Main Street at the Town Hall. You can visit the Charlton's Library webpage for more information on how to register for the upcoming events. National Senior Citizens Day is August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Check out the Charlton Senior Center calendar for the listing on activities for that special day. In honor, in honor of National Senior Citizen Day, Charlton Senior Center is proud to present Professor John Holbrigate at ten thirty AM, Senior Accomplishments in History, Art, Science, Entertainment, and Sports. And at one PM, Michael Godwin's Golden Age of Musical Theater. And that's all what I got.
Thank you, Basha. We're gonna go to open forum, and then we have a very special announcement that we're happy about. Anyone here for open forum? Seeing none? Basha, if you would.
We have a Town of Charlton official citation, and that's to Officer Eric McNeely. In recognition of the exemplary actions you took while off-duty assisting a Millbury police officer with a critical situation on August fifth, two thousand twenty-four, you have demonstrated remarkable courage and professionalism. We are so proud to have you on your team, and truly so impressive. Very impressive. Thank you so much. You make us all feel so much special.
Love you too. Thank you.
That's for you. Thank you so much.
Well done. Chief, you know how to pick them?
Me, she made me take his cape off.
I was gonna say.
There were people at home that might not know the entire, I don't, I don't wanna put him on the spot, but Dan, you might be able to talk about it. So the event that happened for that-
I don't have anything in front of me. I know there was a, I believe it was Dick's, whatever. There was an incident where Millbury Police arrived. They were trying to detain somebody that was stealing from the store, had several warrants, and didn't wanna go. And Eric was shopping, and jumped in and helped, and quite a entanglement went on. But the person was eventually arrested, and everybody's okay now.
That's all. So you were off-duty, obviously, shopping.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, doing, just-
I, well, see, my wife was shopping. But, yeah, that was it. He tried to detain the suspect, and suspect followed him, and suspect was screaming to his, a girl that was there to grab the cop's gun. And that's when I ran over and got ahold of him, and got him under control, and took him custody.
Do you have a gun on you when you're off of duty?
I do.
You do? That's good.
Well, said, "Well done, Officer Neely." Seriously.
Thank you.
Best to the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy this citation. Well deserved.
And be safe out there, and stop having your wife shop at Dick's. That's your first problem. All right, any other community announcements from the board, anybody? No, we're good. All right, first up, for appointments and resignations under sub item four, the appointment of the Assistant Town Administrator. Mr. Golds.
All right, so Executive Assistant to the Town Administrator Kara Hemalowski had revised her end-of-employment date with the Town of Charlton to August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. As previously discussed, we are looking to change the organizational structure of the office to reflect the revised roles and responsibilities of the staff. With over twenty years of experience in the Town Administrator's Office as Executive Assistant, I would recommend the board appoint Mary Devlin to the position of Assistant Town Administrator with a start date of August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll just say that Mary has been invaluable to me over the past five years, and answers every ridiculous question I ever has and have and do, does a tremendous amount of research. For those at home, as a reminder, we are adjusting salary scales, so this will not be an overall line of augmentation, because the position held by Kara, I believe, is gonna be lowered a bit, if you will, to make sure that Mary gets the credit for all the great work she does around here. So again, entertain motions or discussion from the board.
Some move.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second for discussion? Any other discussion?
Nope.
Oh, second?
No, no, good, yep.
Yeah, second.
All right, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Mary, awesome. Well done. And we're still all terrified that we're gonna steal your pen one day, so don't worry about that. Next up is the Perdium Assistant for the Town Clerk's Office.
All right, the position for Perdium Department Assistant for the Town Clerk's Office has received twenty applications. Interviews were conducted by Town Clerk Karen LaCroix and Human Resources Director Lynn Dyer. They recommended the appointment of Janet Crockett as the new Perdium Department Assistant for the Town Clerk's Office with a start date of August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. I recommend the board make the appointment.
Any discussion or motions of the board? I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Welcome, Janet.
Where's Janet? Is Janet here?
No.
Oh. She is still wrong.
And, and yet she gets applause. I get booed no matter what. All right, some more good news, especially with election season coming up, the appointment of our poll workers.
All right, the Town Clerk's Office is asking the board to appoint the following poll workers: David Karen, James Edlin, Laurel Hammer, Donna Kenny, Bonnie Seffert, Adriana Smith, Robert Sullivan, and Diane Wolfe. The expiration date for all would be December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. I'd recommend the board make the appointment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Welcome, and thank you to all. Karen LaCroix, thank you. Next up, we're doing on time. All right, next up, we have the Special Police Officers.
Attaches a request from Police Chief Dowd asking the board to appoint the following contingent upon medical and HR onboarding: Special Police Officer Sean Baxter, Traffic Controller Brad Howard, Traffic Controller Jerry Foskett, and Traffic Controller Sean Murray. I recommend the board make the appointment.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Steve, I'm sorry, was that, was that in opposition, or was that for?
What's that?
Was that for or against?
That was aye.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, all right, so that is unanimous. Thank you all. Lakes and Ponds.
All right, the following are seeking reappointment to the Lakes and Ponds Committee: Ziggy Warkivitz, Frank Zabula, Jackie Nowak, Wayne Markey, Jack Jostie, Andrew McMahon, Mark Cully, Richard Watts, Phil Seer, Phil Mallett, and Jennifer Smith. Their term expiration date would be June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, and I recommend the board make the appointments.
Thank you, Andrew. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor? Oh, sorry, well, Steve, go ahead.
How does this differ from our regular June-July appointments? Why are these not on the original annual ones and?
Not all had confirmed their intent to be reappointed prior to the June deadline.
Yeah, we approved those in the June meeting, who that said, or whatever it was that said, "Yes, we absolutely wanna do it." These were, I won't say holdouts, but we just hadn't, hadn't heard from them.
Yeah.
All right, so we had a motion, wait a second.
Legitimate answer.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Unfortunately, resignations.
All right, we had, the attach is a letter from Ken Gudrow resigning his position as Senior Center Cook effective November fifth, two thousand twenty-four. The board should accept his resignation. As the date gets closer, a letter thanking him for his service to the town will be put in your cycle.
Some move with regrets.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Uh, we got four minutes. Let's jump down to six-one. New business special town meeting set date and open the warrant, please. Sorry, Andrew, I'm gonna be jumping around on here.
All right, we have scheduled the special town meeting for Monday, October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, at seven o'clock PM at Charlton Middle School. I'd ask the board to approve the date and open the warrant. We've confirmed the date is available with Charlton Middle School, as well as Town Clerk, Town Council, Finance Committee, and the moderator. Also attached is a calendar for the Fall Town Meeting.
What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Not if we actually need a motion, but if we do, I would move to accept the calendar presented by Andrew.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on, on the dates or anything?
No.
No.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Appointment of CMRPC delegate and alternate.
Right, each year the board is asked to delegate, to appoint a delegate and an alternate to CMRPC. The Board of Selectmen's delegate currently is Bill Barowski, with the alternate being Basha Zarowski. The board should vote for a delegate member and an alternate member. The planning board will also appoint their own delegate.
Mr. Chair, barring any desire to not do it, I would move to reappoint Mr. Barowski and Ms. Zarowski.
Basha, is that good with you? Do I have a second?
Second, I second my own thing. Second.
Yep, discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Let's go down, we're gonna skip police details for a second. Let's go to Employee Appreciation Day. Sub item three under New Business Six.
All right, so we're looking to schedule the Annual Employee Appreciation Day for Thursday, Aug- August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, from three o'clock to five o'clock at Ford Dresser Hill. Attaches a flyer for your approval. If the board approves, I will ask you to approve the closure of Town Hall at two thirty PM that day.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. And before we get to our first appointment, yep, let's take a look at the request to declare Board of Assessor vehicle.
The board is being asked to declare the Board of Assessors two thousand seven Ford Taurus as surplus property. This vehicle is being retired because it did not pass inspection and would be too costly to repair. Can't really replace a frame. I would recommend that the board approve the requests, and once approved, it will be put out to bid.
Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second?
I second.
Unless you wanna give it to the, the range for target practice.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Scheduled appointments. We have a joint appointment with our friends on the Charlton Housing Authority for a member until May twenty-twenty-five. Okay, six forty-five?
Yep, at six forty-five. One second to get back down to that.
Hey, guys.
Here we go. All right, we were notified that Cedric Flower resigned from the Charlton Housing Authority due to moving out of town. The opening was posted, and one request was received from Jonathan Cook. The vote for appointment must be done jointly and by roll-call vote by both boards, and the term of expiration would be May of twenty-twenty, at the May twenty-twenty-five town election.
Some move.
Can you open up your meeting officially? I'm assuming that you have quorum here?
Yes, I'm Mike Sullivan, Chairman of the Board. I'm not sure, maybe, Mary's been promoted, but maybe she could give me some advice on this. We have a five-member board, but now we're missing a member. So that means we're now a four-member board, and we're asking you to appoint the fifth one.
Yeah, I think we need three from your board to show up.
Two are here. Yeah, and Sue hasn't been feeling it well. She's only across the street, but, yes, so there's only two members here.
My understanding of that is that you need three.
Yeah, we need three.
Can we table this till September? Sorry, Mike.
We can.
Yeah, I wish we could do it, it's just-
Of course.
Yeah, you know how it is.
Sounds good.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Mike. Thank, thank you guys for coming in, though. I appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome.
Oh, here.
Can you just give her a minute? She's gonna see if she's here. She might have to take the elevator out.
Yeah, we're just, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 take care of that.
We'll come back to you.
Yeah. Yeah, no worries. Oh, if that works, that's great. Actually, all right, let me see. Kathleen, any chance you wanna go now, or do you wanna wait? Where'd Kathleen go?
Kathleen, do you wanna go now?
Kathleen, we're like a few minutes early, but it's not a scheduled, like a scheduled meeting, so I hope that's okay. Hey, Jerry. Hey, Kathy.
Jerry? So, this is the best part of living in Charlton. Old Home Day for the hundred-and-twenty-eighth year. And we're here with many of the committee members. Each one is gonna read a little bit. And I'm gonna start. My name's Kathleen Walker. I'm the chairperson of Old Home Day. And this is Jerry Dobell. He's the vice chair.
I'm the vice, so if you have any advice, you let me know.
Each year Old Home Day Committee seeks nominations for community service awards for Charlton businesses or residents. The awards are intended to recognize the volunteer work in the community schools in service to fellow citizens. The awards are not intended for those who during their traditional occupation compete, complete their tasks, but for those who perform the good deeds purely out of volunteerism and civic duty. Whatever the endeavor, these people deserve to be recognized and applauded for their efforts. And we're gonna start with the Youth Community Service Award. It was established in two thousand eleven. This award is intended to recognize the positive contributions of a young member of the community or group who has altruistically pursued humane efforts in improving the world in which we live. Such an award is to establish an example for others of a young age to follow. Jerry?
Community Service Award, Cub Scout Pack one sixty-five. Charlton Cub Scout Pack one sixty-five is a family pack that welcomes boys and girls from kindergarten through grade five into the Cub Scout program. As a pack, they're dedicated to serving our local community through various annual events. Our initiatives include Fill a Tent Food Drive, which benefits Chip and Pantry, and both rake and run and spring cleanup, which directly support the charter organization. The Charlton Federated Church, as well as the local community members. Additionally, we organize Christmas tree pickups in Charlton and actively participate in the Charlton Festival Lights and Memorial Day Parade.
And the next one, we have two individual community service awards, and Jerry's gonna read the first one. It's, the award is given to those who have made contributions which have brightened our little corner of the world.
Community Service Award is for Jerry Foskett, and he's the past DPW Commissioner, but he's been here for many years. On April first of nineteen ninety-six, after working in private sector for several years, Jerry applied for and was hired to fill the open position on the Charlton Highway Department. As of January first, two thousand three, Jerry was appointed to the position of Highway Foreman. When the position of Highway Superintendent became vacant, Jerry applied and said, for said position, and was promoted to Highway Superintendent on two thousand five, and served in said position till his well-deserved retirement in two thousand twenty-three. It's interesting to note that Jerry's father worked as a Charlton Highway Department, and his grandfather served as Highway Superintendent for the Charl- Town of Charlton. During his eighteen years as Highway Superintendent, Jerry had to grapple with a myriad of issues ranging from operating out of antiqu, antiqu, oh, boy, how do you say that one?
Antiquated.
Antiquated, there's the one. Antiquated garage, highway garage, and one out of equipment, staff shortages, numerous budget cuts. Despite it all, Jerry always maintained a positive outlook, working tirelessly in all types of weather to ensure the town roadway infrastructure was being properly maintained. When funds became available, Jerry served on the Charlton Highway Building Committee and painstakingly dissected every detail about the facility that opened in June of two thousand twelve. Jerry's oversight regarding the new highway facility was done to ensure that new highway garage met the current and future needs of the Town of Charlton without adding unnecessary amenities. Jerry always took a position in matters of finance that regardless of what was being sought, that it was truly needed, to be, truly needed, and it was a necessity. So it was not the cause undue burden of the Charlton taxpayers. Therefore, in consideration of all his efforts at devoted public service in the Town of Charlton, the members of Charlton Old Home Day Committee unanimously voted to honor and bestow the retired Highway Superintendent Jerry Foskett the two thousand twenty-four Community Service Award.
Thank you, Jerry. We have one more Community Service Award. We usually have five, but we've only got two this year, and Lanny Howard's gonna come up and tell us about Barbara Benoit.
Good evening. I'm Lanny Howard. I'm a member of the Old Home Day Committee, and we're giving this Community Service Award to Barbara Benoit, who has taught second grade CCD at Saint Joseph's Church to help her have them for First Holy Communion, volunteered at Charlton Elementary School. And the elementary school had a traveling dental program, as well as an audio and visual program, and she would assist them by overseeing the students while being tested. And at Heritage School, she helped in the library for five years, as well as participating in programs run by the PTO. She also volunteered at Charlton Middle, Middle School. She's been on the Board of Director at Charlton Arts and Activities Center for over twenty years, and has been a board member at the CAAC for sixteen years. They just celebrated their ninth annual Blueberry Festival, which drew a crowd of about a thousand, and Barbara participated in that, and she wanted us all to know that the CAAC also offers many programs for all ages, which include Irish Step Dancing, a wonderful music studio, which teases voice, as well as instruments, many instruments. They have an in-house artist and a great theatrical group, the Pasture Prime Players. We're grateful to have Barbara helping to make our lives richer by her volunteer efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next award is the Business Award, and I think Harmon's coming up to read that. This award is intended to recognize local businesses and who, on a regular basis, support community events groups or activities.
Hi, Harmon Hertz, from the Old Home Day Committee. The Business Award goes to Vinyl Underground Sign Shop, which is located at eighteen Curtis Hill Road, Charlton, and is run by Matt Power. Matt and his business have helped with numerous organizations in Charlton over the years. Matt has been a member of the Economic Development Committee for two years and was a founder of the Charlton Business Alliance, along with Kara Holland. He is a member of the seventeen-seventy-six tavern, helping clean, helping cleaning, and with special events. He has made and donated signage for Old Home Day, and also for the Blueberry Festival. He has also made signage for the Health Department and Town Administration Select Board, Library, and Cemetery Divisions, many, many places. Matt collaborates and helps small businesses in town grow. He also worked with and helped out Boy Scout Troop three-three-eight with Eagle Projects and all other projects needed. He is in the process of joining the Historical Society. We have benefited, benefited greatly from the support of Vinyl Underground and its founder, Matt Power. Thank you.
That's Matt Power.
Thank you, Matt.
And the next award is the Honorary Parade Marshal. Sorry.
Brad, this is why we don't take you anywhere.
You're coming up, Brad.
Hello, good evening. Brian Hicks from Old Home Day Committee. This is for the Honorary Parade Marshal.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I forgot to read something. I got distracted. This award goes to longtime residents who, during their lifetime in Charlton, have consistently improved our quality of life. Sorry, Brian.
Don Conapackey. He is a founding member of the Pasture Prime Players, a performing arts group, which includes theater and music. He is also a Board of Director, serving as clerk, and previously served as president for twelve years. Don is a member of Activities Council since nineteen, since two thousand and ten. His primary focus has been in the performing arts aspect of the center. He has also made contributions to several events, such as Blueberry Festival and Trunk or Treat. Don is president of Charlton Rec Friends and has been president of the group, which helps to find additional financial support for Charlton recreation endeavors. For the past two years, he is Chair of the Band Shell Development Committee, which will develop a performing arts band shell, thanks to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Amazon Community Partnership Agreement. He is on the Community Center Feasibility Study Committee, which is exploring construction, which is exploring constructing a new community senior center for Charlton. He is also a member of the CLU, pronounced Cool, the, the Charlton Ukulele League and Ensemble, which meets monthly at the library, and has had holiday concerts at the library the last two years.
That's awesome. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. The Citizen of the Year. I'll read these. There's, there's actually two of them. Cedric Flower and Cindy Cooper, and we're putting them together because they're either married or just got married, and they've moved out of town, but they've left quite a legacy behind them. So I'll tell you about Cedric. He moved to Charlton in nineteen eighty-nine with his marionette theater group from Bennington, Vermont. He was elected to the Charlton Public Library Board during its construction of the addition. He was also elected to the Charlton Cultural Council when it moved to Town Hall and created the Charlton Art Show banner and installed the Town Hall Exhibition Art Hangers. He was elected to the Charlton Housing Authority Board in two thousand sixteen, and again in two thousand twenty-one. He created and chaired the Cathy's Memorial Wildflower Meadow at the Charlton Housing Authority. Cedric was, and we are honored to have him again this year, as Master of Ceremonies at Old Home Day. He also performed as Santa Claus, as Charles Dickens, and in Christmas Carol with the Charlton Senior Center, and also the Town Crier. It's not mentioned here, but he's been a great Town Crier, as you've all seen. Cindy Cooper moved to town in nineteen eighty and adopted Charlton. Over the ensuing years, she volunteered to write grants, requests for the library, addition, and multiple nonprofits. She shared Charlton's history through programs and articles and advocated for relief for Charlton residents impacted by the South Bridge landfill. Involvement in town included organizing documents for the Historical Commission, serving as a delegate to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, and election to the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. This year Cindy chaired the Council on Aging, where she advanced services for the senior population, was Vice President of the Helping Hand Society, which gives financial aid to residents who have an immediate but temporary need, was Treasurer of the Cathy Keough Memorial Wildflower Meadow, and was a board member of the Charlton Historical Society. Cindy is proud of her two sons, two daughters-in-laws, and nine grandchildren, who continue to make Charlton their home. And our last award is gonna, is being presented by Brad Howard, and it's given to a departed citizen who gave much to this community. Brad?
Hi, I'm Brad Howard. Good evening. Posthumous award this year we'd like to give to Jean Marie Jeannie Garmon Vincent. Jeannie passed away on May thirtieth after a brief illness and left behind her beloved husband of thirty-six years, Richard Vincent. Jeannie was born in Cleveland, Ohio. She worked for twenty-eight years for the Town of Charlton as the Director of Housing, serving three years on the Charlton Planning Board, working in the Town Hall as, in the Clerk's office, and volunteered for many years as a poll worker for the town elections. Jeannie served on the Central Mass, she was its Regional Planning Commission, as well as on the Board of Directors for eventual life skills. She was a devout Catholic and member of Saint Joseph's Church in Car- She was a devout Catholic and member of Saint Joseph's Church in Charlton. Jean was a hard worker and dedicated not only to serving the town of Charlton, but also a fellow parishioners by her active membership with the Mary Martha Gilda Saint Joseph's Church. A major accomplishment was her work with the Community Emergency Response Team for forty years. A colleague said that Jean was always going above and beyond. No matter what she was asked to do, her impact was huge and she will be sorely missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
And thank you to the board. We're looking forward to seeing you all. You too, David. And he didn't smile at me once, so I'm going to pick on him. At Old Home Day, you'll all be there to give out these awards. We're going to give out the awards that day in March in the parade. It's going to be one o'clock this year and they've given us a whole hour to do it, so Bash is going to help. So thank you so much.
Kathleen, thank you and the committee for this. You have some outstanding people and organizations this year, so very well done.
Thank you. Thanks. It's a lot of fun.
All right. We will absolutely see you then.
Great.
Cool. Thanks, Kathleen. Mike, how we doing back there? Where'd Mike go? Is my mic back?
He's not. We have to reschedule.
Okay, so we're going to table the six forty-five joint appointment till hopefully September. Andrew, worst case, and Mary as well, maybe worst case, we can do like a quick Zoom because it's only going to take ten minutes. That way people might be able to get on. Just, just at some point during the week. Just something to think about. All right, next up Superintendent Peel.
Good evening. Bring some updates on some of the larger scale projects in town this summer. Probably saw the Sonic Home Road by now. It's been done for about three weeks. That came out excellent. We did a two-inch mill. We brought in one-inch level cores, an inch and a half top. Reset all the grates and frames, drainage structures. And I'm happy to say anytime it rains, I'm proud to go down that road and watch the water hit all the drains. That was the biggest contributor to the unraveling of that road at rapid pace. So now that that's taken care of, that should be a long-lasting road for many, many years. Potter Village is well underway. We started that about a month and a half with a lot of tree clearing for sightline improvements. We're going to have major improvements with sightline and surface, widening the road. That was a total reclaim. We ground that up, brought it back to gravel. They basted today. Should be topping it tomorrow. And then we'll do our final touches on the edge of the road to button that up. And then along with the paving, we're doing some chip seal in town. Get some roads. Timber Valley, Jay Hammond, Old Stafford, Bailey's Road, Colburn Road and Old Town Road. We fixed some of the most blemished areas and then we'll cover it with a chip seal. I know Andrew's put it out to social medias for a little heads up for the town's residents. Other than that, Mr. Barowski, we have the town boundaries. We've been working on those.
Oh, nice.
About halfway, roughly halfway found. And as they're all found, finally located, we'll get in touch and we'll do our walkthrough.
Nice. Thanks.
Anticipate sometime this fall.
Yeah, sometimes after mosquito season's fine.
That would be good. Get the leaves to fall off and cool off a little bit. Along with those, it's just the daily calls, perpetual care. And just kind of very busy summer so far. A lot of work getting done and credit to the department as a whole.
Yeah. Just a shout out to you and the team. I mean, honestly, this is some of the roads I've seen the best in shape. I mean, not just the larger projects you're working on, as you mentioned, which are fantastic. Just driving down Masonic Hill, I know everyone's going to say the joke around, well, now it's going to be a Speedway. I'm sure the chief will be happy to enforce that. But it's even those smaller things. I have gotten so many compliments for your folks around. Someone will give you a call about some miscellaneous pothole and it's fixed within like twenty-four hours type of thing. So your customer experience, customer service has been fantastic and your quality of work's wonderful. So again, nothing but the highest praises for me. So very well done.
It's great to hear. Thank you.
Anything else?
When we're looking for those cornerstones for the town that I've heard this.
Oh, that's what he was talking about, the boundary stones.
The town bounds.
The boundaries, yeah.
So they're roughly, half of them have been located so far. We're working on it. We're filling in. Hopefully this fall, we'll have them all located. We'll be able to do a walkthrough, coordinate something.
But this isn't the first year I've heard this, though. We've been.
Yeah, we've been talking about it and it just for whatever reason, because of weather, COVID, everything. It's been putting out, yeah. So Nick was kind enough, because he's really good at this, to help find them. Because Barry and I would be walking around in the woods and probably have to call him for help anyway.
Not easy. Not easy.
My point was it might not be a bad idea to put a GPS locator, I mean, just a, not a locator on it, but.
Yeah, take the location. No, we are. We're jotting down notes for each one and GPS coordinates.
Well, between that and the cow tunnel, it's going to be a golden time for walking.
And maybe one day I can see the signs, Charlton signs on each, on the beginning and on the end.
See, I thought you've done them every year.
Oh, no, it's like once every like five or ten years you're supposed to do them.
Signs, Charlton signs?
What about?
I'm talking about the Charlton signs. That's what I want to see.
All right, we can definitely talk about it.
Yeah, Andrew's working on it.
I'm happy to hear that. Any other questions, concerns for Nick? You good? Cool. Well, I'm sure we'll see you at Fall Town Meeting when some ask, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Good job, Nick. Thanks.
Ah, we're a couple of minutes early. How are our friends on the Housing Authority? Everybody here yet? Or should we wait? Oh, I'm sorry. No, I meant Council on Aging. My bad.
I think they're posted. Are they posted for seven fifteen?
It says seven fifteen scheduled appointment, but is that like a?
Are you guys posted for seven fifteen?
We're all set. We've got a forum.
But is your meeting posted for seven?
It's posted. It's posted for seven fifteen.
Oh, seven fifteen. All right, all right. We have to wait a few minutes. Sorry. Yes, Chief, any chance we can get to police details for large events?
It'll take a few minutes. We've got a couple of options. Keith just walked out. He's prepared to talk about.
All right. How about the old business? I know Keith had to walk out with the deputy chief. Emily, what do you think? Okay, guys, let's go to Emily under old business. See, Dan, I tried to get you out here earlier. What happened? How are you, Emily? How are you feeling?
Good. How are you?
Fantastic.
All right, so since the last time we were here, I reached out to five more rescues with two potential leads. One being our companions in Manchester, Connecticut, where they have dog behavior programs on site with professional trainers on site. The other rescue is Potter's Angels Rescue in Vermont. I am hoping to hear from the rest of them throughout the week before the hearing. They both want to do a meet and greet with Puka and myself, rightfully so, before committing to anything. I am awaiting a phone call from the designated person who set that up and will update accordingly. I have given them full rundown on Puka and if they wish to transfer him into their care, they will have full disclosure of his history on paper. If one of those rescues works out, he will not need to be deemed dangerous or follow the orders, but we would hope that they are diligent about his behaviors and direct him in the right path. Thank you for allowing me more time to find an alternative long-term solution for Puka. And I hope one of these two rescues with the proposed meet and greet will work out. With that being said, I do have a meet and greet scheduled for this Thursday at ten AM with our companions from Manchester, Connecticut.
Do you think that the other one you'll have before September tenth, the other conversation as well?
I'm not, I'm not sure, but I'm hoping this one works out.
Okay. So, thank you, Emily. I appreciate the update and you take care of the pub. So I basically throw this out to the board. I think we have one of two options. One, we continue this to September tenth and make a decision then. Or we make a decision tonight that if either option doesn't work out, unfortunately, Puka would have to be euthanized. I can, we can wait till September tenth and make the decision then. But at some point, it's the Fisher cut bait thing. We can't, unfortunately, we can't hold the dog forever.
I would move to hold until the tenth only because there's an opportunity that if it works out, we won't have to. And we're only talking a few weeks.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
And if that doesn't work out, then we'll have no choice but to look at other measures.
Okay. So Emily, anything you can do before September tenth? My assumption is we're going to make a final determination on the.
Yeah, and I will definitely update you guys accordingly.
Thank you as always.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Good luck and appreciate the hard work.
Thanks.
All right, five more minutes. Andrew, let's go to your TA report if that's okay.
Relatively brief this evening, just basically an update on some stuff. So one thing Nick didn't touch upon, but Main Street sidewalks. So you may have noticed over the last week granite curb installations have been ongoing. We're hopeful that concrete pouring will begin sometime next week with crosswalk installations to be completed soon after that. AFA Marillo is putting a push on to try to get this completed before Old Home Day and the start of school. So that way be nice and dressed up by then. For the fire station, we received general and subcontractor pre-qualification submittals, which have all been submitted on the fire station project. We had about a hundred and eight submittals to go through for that. The project team is in the process of reviewing the pre-qualification. And currently Context Architecture has submitted the site plan application to the Planning Board for their review, which should be scheduled for September. So the project continues to move along. With Baynard Field, the ADA upgrades continue to progress. The foundation work at the new snack shack is near completion with the structural work to begin soon. They're looking for the final slab and pavement work to be coordinated sometime within the next week. And National Night Out, just want to recognize the great job by all of our public safety personnel in organizing the National Night Out this year. Unfortunately, weather wasn't quite on our side, but with this becoming an annual event moving forward, we're hope to continue to grow and get better weather, better turnout every time that we do it. So just want to thank you guys for doing that.
Yeah, good job, Chief.
Very well done.
All right. Any questions for Andrew? One thing under other business, just for a future item, a couple of things. Again, we still got to start talking about now that we have town council. We want to start talking around the renaming Select Board from Board of Selectmen. That's one thing. The other is Steve, I think, mentioned it a couple of meetings ago as well. We want to start talking around the Town Clerk position and potentially the Government Study Committee. And lastly, for hopefully not too delayed response from our friends in the school committee, can we find out what's going on with our deregilization study?
I can give you guys an update.
Oh, yeah.
It's what?
I give you guys an update.
Yeah, please. Yeah, if you don't mind. Yeah, thanks. Cool. All right. Anything else for future agenda items for Pete?
No, but these could be put on the next agenda, the two you just talked about?
I'll, I mean, I'll defer to Pete, but yeah, I mean, I don't see why, why we could, to at least start the conversation.
Yeah.
Because I think, I think it's going to be a while. We're not going to hit it for October, in my opinion, because I don't think we'd want to rush it. But I would hope that both of these would absolutely be on in May.
I think we, we just don't want to lose it for May.
Correct, absolutely, yeah. So we got those three thoughts. And Andrew, thank you for that. I appreciate it. All right, we're at seven thirteen.
That's how I read it. It should be outside.
Yeah, Andrew, read slowly for the next two minutes.
All right, so we have a joint appointment with the Council on Aging for an additional member. We were notified that Cynthia Cooper resigned from the Council on Aging due to moving out of town. The opening was posted and one request was received from Sheila Shemalowski. Council on Aging interviewed Ms. Shemalowski and would recommend she be appointed. The vote for appointment must be done jointly and by roll call vote by both boards. The term expiration date would be June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. So it being about seven fifteen, I think that you guys can probably call your board to order.
Could the COA please call their meeting to order?
I was just appointed chairman, so I'm afraid.
Oh, congratulations.
No, don't congratulate me.
Honestly, it's a curse. It's a, I lost a bet tonight, so. Okay, that's right. Hey, guys.
So Sue Crockett, Mike Zereski. So we're very lucky that Sheila came forward. We only had one application. She was previously Senior Center Director in the town of Bolton for ten years. She actually helped create a new location for the senior center while in the ten years. And she continues to be interested in helping seniors to stay in their home, be healthy and be happy. She comes with great qualifications. We're very lucky.
That's right. Just for my benefit, I just want to confirm for posterity that you have a quorum that.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, just want to make sure.
I think everyone is here.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just, you know, just those viewing at home. So you've been, so that means been opened. We have a, we have a nomination. Again, as a reminder to everybody, there's a variety of ways to do this because there's only one candidate, very well deserved. It's nice to have a motion, then a second, and then we'll take individual roll call all around either aye or nay by name. So.
Mr. Singer, we had the motion from earlier, but we still need the second for our board.
Oh, somebody made a motion?
I did earlier.
Did you? I didn't hear you say that. All right, so we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, so roll call vote, if it's okay, we'll start with the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Singer?
Aye.
I say aye. Bash?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Our friends on the Council on Aging.
Yeah, aye.
Mike?
Crockett, aye.
No, yeah, no, she's good. Got it. So Sheila, we're good. Oh, we're back. Oh, someone else? Oh, I'm sorry, guys.
Yeah, we have everybody back.
Just like shout out your name and like aye, please.
Jim Howard, aye.
Thanks.
Barbara Lawson, aye.
Thanks, Barbara.
Jim Russell, aye.
Oh, hey, Jim. Yep, Mike's good.
Mike already, yeah.
You're breaking me down twice.
You know what? There's a joke in there somewhere about voting twice in an election and I just can't go down that path today. It's going to be.
That's a rumor.
Welcome to the show. So happy to have you. You have a great group to work with.
I spent twenty years as the director of the Bolton Council on Aging.
Oh, wonderful. That's great.
I have a lot of ideas.
Oh, wonderful.
Maybe someday Charlton will get a standalone senior center.
Well, we keep talking about it.
We will keep talking about it, for sure.
Well, again, welcome. Thank you for everything. Thank you, our friends on the Council on Aging. Can you officially just close your meeting by saying I motioned to close the meeting?
You want me to say that?
Please.
I'll make a motion. We close the meeting.
Mike?
I make a question.
Give me a second. All's in favor? All right, that's enough. Thanks, guys. I appreciate it. Sheila, thank you again. Mike, everybody.
Can I ask a question not regarding this?
I, depending upon the topic.
Something you've already spoken about here.
Oh, I don't see why not.
I just wondered if now, probably not now, but in the future, there might be plans to extend the sidewalk on Main Street to the community center. It's kind of no man's land up there, you know, it's, it's dangerous, you know, really. People are walking out in the street and it would make it more user-friendly.
It's a good question. And I'll say, I think we talked about it in general, like conceptually. Couple of issues, cost and also the property takings that would, that'd be required. That's probably the more problematic issue because we can all talk around the right of way and yes, the town owns X amount of feet, but when it comes down to it's your yard, that's going to get whacked out like five or six feet to make it ADA compliant. There's a certain amount of sensitivity that goes along with that, the church and everything. So I think it's something we're still going to talk about in the future. But I think for now, right Andrew, like, like we're not, like we're not at that point.
Yeah, it was essentially that, what you got to that part of the road, the grading was a challenge with the way that the church's property currently outlies. So we would have had to kind of figure out the best approach of doing that. And again, doing sand and soil testings and all that. So this was, this was phase one.
I'd just say something about the.
Senior Center, maybe.
The senior center. And just say that with Michelle and her crew is gaining more popularity with the people in Charlton and they're coming in by the handfuls.
That's great.
It's really good, so.
I've been watching the Facebook page and it's always packed, so that's good to see.
We had a.
Gypsies.
Belly dance.
That was awesome, yes.
Belly dance. You guys didn't come down to see it.
I guess the invite was lost in the mail. Well, thank you both. Michelle, did you have something you want to say?
I just wanted to thank you, Bill, for your generosity and donating to the Council on Aging. Your stipend for being a Board of Selectmen member. It went so far for us for supplies and activities. It was so incredibly generous of you and it meant the world to us. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
Oh, you're very, you're very kind. I'm glad that you put it to like good use.
You were very kind. And I also want to thank police and fire for their generosity because we have wonderful presentations this week by Detective Jason White and firefighter Ian Haggerty. Extremely informative on scams and tips and all kinds of pieces. uh, on scams and, and tips and all kinds of pieces of information regarding, you know, bile of life and red street signs. And we're just very grateful to have all of the, the camaraderie and support from all the town departments, so thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, keep up the great work. Bye Jim, bye everybody. All right, we are officially on schedule, which makes me happy. We are now going under new business sub item three, police details for large event, assuming Keith and the deputy chief are here.
All right, so in discussion with, uh, Chief Dowd, we've identified the need to create a comprehensive set of rules and regulations for businesses, businesses that are anticipating large gatherings, which may impact traffic flow and public safety. Chief Dowd has asked the town to consider adoption of a general bylaw governing the need for traffic details when, when fit. Uh, attached is a copy of bylaws that were promulgated by the town of Foxborough, which might be used as a template. Chief Dowd is available to discuss this proposal further.
Uh, one, one other issue that we did discover though was the recent event at five oh eight. So we were definitely blindsided by that. Typically, when somebody asks for a one day liquor license, you know, Mary will send out the flyers and we, it goes around to department to department, we all sign off on it, we're kind of in the know, and then I can, that allows me with the alcohol to say, hey, you're gonna have an event, you're expecting this many people, you need to have, you know, five offices up there during the event to keep the noise down, keep the problems down, or whatever. That didn't occur because there was no alcohol officially at this event, but some places are doing entertainment. Whenever it's entertainment, there's a component where they'll say, if you're gonna have a large gathering or some type of event, and there's, you're expecting an overflow of people, that the police have some say in as far as like obviously, you know, Indian Ranch or Great Woods or whatever it's called now, you know, those type of events, there's, there's offices there, so that they're not tying up all the resources in the police department.
Well, even at football games, with Bay Path and dances, you guys are up there.
Uh, typically, yeah, they're, they're not all the games, but typically they're anticipating an issue or something, they'll reach out to us, or a basketball game if, if it's a rival and they're anticipating problems, but, but I think we have nothing. And nothing is not an answer.
Nothing's not right, no, nothing, nothing.
And Keith, Keith did a lot more research, so Keith, if you've got any specific questions or you want to sell something, now's your time to sell it.
Yeah, no, it's difficult, it, I was on the planning board for ten years, so like whenever you have any entity in town, they go through site plan review, review or special permit review, and usually within that, uh, review, you know, they can, the planning board can set conditions. So like on this case with five oh eight, you know, I don't know, I wasn't part of that, I mean, I've been off the planning board for a long time, but I don't know what conditions were set upon five oh eight as part of this site plan or special permit, about what they can, can't do, quiet times and things like that. So that made it very difficult for us to be able to go in there and either A, shut them down, um, you know, tell them they have the higher details, have the, because theoretically, they've already been through a permitting process through the town. And we don't know what that is and what, what, what was there. So really, um, I know some towns have it, um, where it's, the, the board sets like a standard, but I don't know how you enforce it, if it's just a policy. Um, some towns like Foxborough, they actually have it as, you know, in their general bylaws. Uh, we did look at, and Andrew's the one that actually gave it to me, was the, um, entertainment licensing. But I actually haven't, I don't know who uses it, I don't know, and I, I think you'd have to probably talk to town council, like who actually enforces it, who gives the fines, does it go through like say the court, does it go out as such as like a, a bylaw ticket, so now it's under the twenty one D? I, I really don't, I haven't been able to see a lot about that, so I'm really not sure if you've actually heard. Um, I did, when I was looking at this bylaw, and I, I think you all have a copy of it, uh, the only thing I suggested to, um, like when I was talking to Andrew on it, would be, uh, clean up the language and talk to co- town council, so that, um, any fines or any, um, anything that's given on it that would actually go to the landowner. Um, because I, you know, ra- reason why I look at that is like, I, you know, as a, I could lease a piece of property as a business, and I could say, well, that business now has to, you know, pay me X. Well, say that business folds or goes away, well, how do you collect, how do you take a business to court? It makes it very difficult, whereas opposed the other way, if it's the landowner's responsibility, now it goes into part of tax liens and things like that. So it's just a thought, and again, I, I defer to a town council about putting that in there, but that was just kind of my thought. But this, this bylaw seems to at least cover where the chief can say, you know what, you're gonna have, you know, based on your vet, you're gonna have three detail officers and you are going to pay for it, and then the bill goes to the landowner or whatever, and then they have to pay, so that was just.
No, thanks Elton, uh, David, you first.
Uh, had you a quick question, so do we actually need a detailed policy? I'm only asking because if Dan's a strong chief, do you already have the authority as a strong chief to just say, you're gonna have a detail? And how many people?
I'd have to talk to legal counsel, what that allows me to actually do. I don't know that I can just willy nilly say.
Yeah, I don't think it does.
You're a five and you're a two, and you know, there must, there's gotta be some kind of plan in place. And I think whatever we do, I think we should run it through town council before we obligate ourselves to something, because sometimes we go down a wrong path and then we, well, what about this situation, we weren't prepared for it? Like, I don't think anybody saw this five oh eight event occurring, though it was just not on our radar screen, so I think other departments were blindsided as well.
And that's, and that's potentially a problem for another day, but the, the town really didn't know about it.
Yeah, I think there's a, like, a, a myriad of issues to your point, Steve, that one is what permits, if any, are required? And if there aren't, well, then that's a conversation that we can have, because I don't think anyone wants to over permit anybody, but at the same time, I think a recognition that an event is happening that is going to tax our public safety resources is just a common sense approach that we should be notified. The second is, as a reminder to everyone in town, we don't have a noise ordinance, so the best we're doing is based upon some state law. Uh, there's a bunch of other towns and cities out there that actually do have formal, uh, pieces that are enforced by normally the Board of Health or some, or something along those lines, we don't have that, doesn't exist, it's been talked about in the past. A couple of Facebook pages mentioned it, and it was, uh, a very interesting debate, uh, for lack of a better word, that the people were very much saying, no, leave Charlton alone, we don't want, you know, more rules. However, to be candid, a lot of those people don't live right next door to any type of, not, not type of five oh eight, but if someone's blaring your radio at two o'clock in the morning next to you, I think you're gonna have, and, and if you have young kids, I think you're gonna have a much different feeling about it than dealing with a hypothetical libertarian argument. So I think that's a, that's a conversation perhaps with the Board of Health that we should look at. And then the, this third piece, I think, as the chief is saying, it's around, all right, at what point can the chief and his team say, you know what, this is gonna cause some problems, uh, let's make sure we have some number of detailed officers to keep things under control. So I think we need to discuss the other two at some point, I think on this one tonight, um, I, so I read the bylaw, I think it's good. I think definitely run it through town council, I think I, I want to think about some of the numbers, because I think that the number three twenty five was, was bounded, I don't know if that's too low, too high. I'd be curious if we can get a couple of other smaller towns who have something like this, till, till I take a look at. Um, because what I wouldn't want to have happen is like, let's say somebody throws a wedding, and there's like a hundred fifty people, I'm making something up. Uh, and then suddenly, we're making them get a detail.
Yeah, and that's what I don't want.
Yeah, exactly.
But I also don't want to be unfair and say, well, how come Bob had to have?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, no, absolutely, yeah.
Sally only had to have two, so sometimes a number with maybe the exception that a waiver could be given based upon.
Absolutely.
Just two comments, I also, that I'm aware of, don't know of any facility in town that has the capacity to have multiple events with the total five hundred people. So we need to know if those even exist in town, number one. And I agree with Bill, I'd want to see what comes back from legal, uh, verbiage, numbers. And I think I would just caution everyone if we go through this, very fine line, right, between respecting property owners' rights and neighbors' rights, and we want to make sure that whatever we do is fair to both sides and is not stepping on anyone's toes and not, not government overreach.
Absolutely.
Can I, can I just, uh?
Yeah, Keith go.
Opine on this a little bit?
Please.
The, the other part of that, about this, we also don't want to confuse our, having detailed officers and what occurred over at five oh eight, that's almost like two different things, in some ways, because, um, they actually had their own private security there. So, you know, the police are only gonna be there for security, but we can only shut something down based on what the law allows us to shut down, and that's why I was sa- saying like through site plan or review, if the site plan said, hey, they have to be done at eleven, you know what I mean? Okay, you're done at eleven, but if, if that's not part of their site plan, I don't know where the authority comes to shut them down. If, if a, if a board has already reviewed them, said, yes, you can do X, okay, well then what stops them from doing X? You know, so that was just a, whether it's a noise by law or something else.
And I would just say, just for a second, make sure we all, we, we all re baseline on this one, that this isn't pointed at any individual organization, a recent event was the catalyst for the discussion. But I want to make sure that we're not as a board, as a, as a, as a group, um, a larger group, uh, specifying that it's because of X, Y or Z. It's rather, I think, go, on a go forward with the amount of land we have in town, with the amount of events we hope to have in town. I think this is just prudent planning for the future regardless of what landowner wants to do anything, um, so. Uh, oh, that's sorry, Dave, that's Steve, your first.
Yeah, I think it's, um, and I follow that Facebook post as well. There's a big difference between a noise ordinance and an entertainment permit. A noise ordinance would be something that if, that if, if, if I'm playing my radio too loud at night, but it's not a pay, it's not an entertainment permit, wasn't required for me to do that, so. And if we, and if we join those two together, we're just gonna get stuck in the weeds and we're never gonna solve it.
Yeah, that's why I would recommend keeping them separate, and for now, yeah, this is all around. When an event is held in town that exceeds X amount of people, that will have a Y impact or a, a probable Y impact on traffic and safety, we should be notified, and I, then we can leave it up to chief's discretion. More than likely, I would assume we would just want an officer out there for safety, but David, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, a- as you're well aware, I've never been and still not in favor and won't support myself a noise ordinance town wide. Because I've just seen too many times where you have an instance, not just in Charlton, but other places where neighbors don't get along, and they decide to weaponize a noise ordinance, and for the most part, that's not a problem in Charlton. So anything we do in that regard, I'd rather see it around an event specific, uh, rule. I think, Dan, I don't know if we talked about it, but you know, I know I talked about it with somebody, where maybe, you know, if there is an event, depending on weeknight, it might have to, we're not gonna shut you down, I don't think you tell private property to shut down, but after a certain hour on certain nights, maybe after this time, decimals have to be below this to continue on. And a weekend, maybe it's a little bit later, you know, where you can still have your party or event, but if you're going past that hour, decimals have to be below, something like that. In other words, it's just, it's addressing those instances without punishing everybody else in town.
But it, but it's gonna be something that, and that's why we have to run it through council, that, that enables the chief to be able to put some teeth into that.
That would be the bylaw with the repercussions.
So then a bylaw would need to go through town meeting and the whole bit and.
Just that, uh, that entertainment statute that Andrew gave me, and maybe if you could run that by town council and say, what, how does that work? Cause it does say that the town can issue permits, well, how, how does that work, what do you have to do to make that work and?
Yep, could I make the recommendation to the board, and obviously the, the staff, that we, that we take a binary path? Not say binary, but at least a, a twofold path of this. One would be an event noise on one side, and the other side is traffic detail. Keep them separate, even though in, in a Venn diagram, they're, they're somewhat related, and allow the opportunity for town meeting voters eventually, if not October and May, to make distinct choices on those, Andrew, like, do you see what I'm saying? Yeah, so anything we can do for October is cool, I think it, it could probably wait till May as well. I don't want to rush this, because I want people saying that the board should be, you know, is, is you're trying to push something through, so.
But what do we want to do in the meantime, though? As far as any, as far as any permits coming in front of us, how do we want to deal with them?
Well, I think Andrew doing some research to see if they needed a permit, and if they do, then we have to find out a way how to find it via, via, uh, uh, town council, however, again, without knowing the, the specifics of any events, that I don't know if a permit was required at five oh eight. I would rather not talk with five eight too much, because we didn't invite them in tonight to talk about it. I'm just talking about it in the, in, in the overall. I think if we could research around, with the planning board, for anything that could ha- have a, have a larger gathering, what, what site plans that they have, um, and, or what conditions they have, then we can take it from there. But for now, I would just say, let's talk to town council, use the Foxborough, use the, uh, use the entertainment. Uh, maybe we can talk through with not a pure, not a holistic noise ordinance, but maybe a targeted noise ordinance on, on large events, and we can.
I wouldn't call it that, I, I'd call it a, a permitted event, not a, not a, an ordinance, sounds to people town wide.
Just one quick thing, and we've all discussed this, is nobody's playing at Fenway or Gillette Stadium at two AM.
Right.
It isn't happening.
Yep.
Now, whether it's the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fine that they levy or, but there's gotta be some teeth to whatever you folks decide to do, because, you know, there's a neighborhood that's, can't sleep.
Right. And again, I, I think that there's a happy compromise in here to be protecting people, to be able to enjoy themselves, enjoy their own property, with the good neighbor rule, but if you don't follow the good neighbor rule, anyone says, well, people should just be good neighbors. You know what, sometimes they're not, and let, let's be honest, that, that's just what happens, that's why we have the police, that's why we have a lot of nonsense that we have to deal with.
I thought you were over that.
Dude, I'm still angry at you. So, yeah, so if we could, let, let's start, again, with the, with the blessing of the board, let's start talking to town council, uh, where we, wo- work with team, use what we have already and see just what we have from like.
Yeah, we probably need to do that sooner than, at, at least talk to town councils sooner.
I've already, I've already, I've already been on top of it.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
Cool, oh, hello. Yeah, you wanna come on? Thanks Dan, thanks.
Thank you. Support here, I just.
Oh, sorry, just your name and just.
This is Amy Stanley.
Thanks Amy.
Sarah Sandberg.
Thanks Sarah.
I just want to thank you guys, Police Department, for bringing this up, because it's huge, and I know it affected a lot of us last weekend. The event, I don't want to.
Can you slide the microphone?
Amy, just to be honest with you, I don't want to get into the event too much.
But I like it that you guys are discussing, you know, we don't want to blanket, you know, go after everybody, but when you're having an event that starts on Thursday to Sunday, ten AM to five AM, that's a little bit out of, you know, being a good neighbor. But like you said, I don't want to blanket, you know, like, cause I, I'm the one of those two Facebook posts.
Again, I like to think in, in, that intelligent prudent people can reach compromise. And that's what I'm hoping that we come up with on this. Like, nothing draconian, but at the same time, something that's in a bylaw that says, again, the reasonable person would say, okay, that makes sense.
The other thing I was thinking of is, I believe this one would have needed, the five oh eight would have needed an entertainment permit.
Sorry, I mean, I can't talk about that one still.
Okay, sorry, we won't bring that one up again.
Just because they're not here, and I, and I want to be fair to them.
Yeah, I'm just thinking blanketed, um, and, and entertainment permit, you guys could put stipulations in there.
That's something that will, I'm sure.
That would be huge and helpful.
For everybody throughout town.
And then, you know, the police being on board on that, that's really awesome, we really appreciate that, because that was, I don't want to bring it up again, but.
No, we got it.
I don't complain unless something's intrusive in my home, you know, that was tough. But I liked being able to go to the town and get the, everybody in town's input on it, and everybody was respectful. There was one percent weren't, but, but anyways, but it was nice.
You should see our emails, they're not.
So I don't want to be that neighbor, but I want to make sure, you know, that this, the whole town isn't affected by something.
Um, like I said, I, I'm confident we can come up with something that people can live with. Did you have anything?
Well, I'm glad that you brought up that people have, sometimes have a wedding or something. Um, there was a time, a former neighbor, Mr. Bellrose, who's no longer with us sadly, they had a wedding in their yard, and he came to each and every one of us that lived, brought in a letter and everything saying what they were going to do, and to let him know if it got too loud or anything, and it didn't, it was fine, but it's nice to be notified. Noise in general, even though there's no bylaw that you have here or ordinance, there is a state law, and it's very definitive, and if the town doesn't have a, a certain law about the noise, then you refer to the state laws, and they're very explicit, extremely explicit.
I think it's above ten decibels of a, of a reasonable range. And, but I think the problem is around enforcement, we're not sure exactly who does it. My belief is that it's the Board of Health, others believe it's the Police Department, so I think it's something that we can.
How about a combination?
Continue to look at, but I think that's what we have to define and then how all that really works. And then is, then is really ten decibels too much noise, because sometimes that's a, damn, what is that, like a car honking? I mean, how do I even know?
You mean like this even?
Absorb some of the noise, so I, I want to say.
Yeah.
You're not hearing it from, you know, on a butter, you're not hearing it, it's probably not convenient, but if it's hearing it.
If it's right next to you.
Yep.
And we have sound panels actually on one side of our house, as it is, because of said noise above.
I'm just gonna say.
And it's not about, it's not about that.
We're not talking with.
This is not about that particular.
Yeah, but we are def- but your point is well taken, I mean, we, we, we have to find a reasonable approach to this, because as we continue to grow as a town, and I know everyone hates the. Because as we continue to grow as a town, and I know everyone hates to hear this, this isn't Charlton from, from 50 years ago. That's why we need better public safety. That's why we need better roads. Our, our population's growing. As housing prices continue to go astronomical in Boston, people are gonna continue to push out west. And guess who has 40 some odd square miles of, of land? We are ripe for, for, for development. And the fact is, we have to find ways to balance property rights with property rights. You know what I mean? Like neighbor versus neighbor. How can we all just get along without losing our Charlton charm? Knowing that we're no longer covered in ives with like horse drawn, you know, carriages and, and like the snow. That, that's gone. So again, we just gotta find a, a, a good way to do this. So we, we will continue down this path, assuming the board wants to.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I don't think we have any other way, right?
Sooner than later, yeah.
Cool. All right, let's shoot for no later than May's town meeting. Uh, would, maybe October if we can get something out there, at least for the police, uh, but let's.
Unless, unless a permit comes in front of us sooner, then we have to address it.
If we can legally, yes. Cool.
Word that carefully. Thank you very much.
Oh, please, sir. Come on up, please. Just, just your name for the record, please, sir.
My name's Orin Cisco, 38 North Sullivan Road. Yep, there's a noise issue. Definitely needs to be addressed. I'm in a butter to five oh eight. Noise issue is probably the least of my concerns. This last event, we had campers put pitching tents on my property.
Orin, I'm sorry, Francisco, I, again, I mean, with the, with the impact, we weren't actually discussing five oh eight tonight and I don't want to put the property or the event in a bad light without them being able to, uh, to rebut any type of accusations.
Who's responsible? Is the landowner responsible for that?
That's.
Or is it the organization putting the event on responsible?
I'll say in general, that is a question that we are talking to town council about, uh, around any, any, any entity in town that has property that leases out, whether it be St. Joseph Church, whether it be, uh, Jocelyn, whether it be five oh eight, regardless of who it is. We're doing investigation of that now to figure out where the ultimate responsibility falls. I think it might be a gray area unless we hear back from legal. Uh, but at this point, that's, and, and to be honest, and for everyone at home, the reason why, like from a, from a former planning board member and, you know, you know, Keith, Keith will tell you this. There's a reason why our zoning is so complicated. There's a reason why our subdivision rules are so complicated. Every single one of those rules were based upon someone pushing the envelope too far. And finally, someone had to say, enough. You pushed it, you pushed it too far, so now we have to create a rule. And this, and honestly, that's what we're investigating now to figure out.
How far of an envelope should I be pushed? What envelope, where, where does, should I draw the line? After that trespass, the dispatch made me bring that young man all the way 2,800 feet through the woods.
You're getting too far into the conversation.
No, we've got more. This is just part of it.
But it's not though. I'm sorry, Francisco. I.
On my return trip.
I'm sorry, Francisco.
There was three puddles in my, on my car.
All right, Francisco, I'm gonna ask you to stop now. I appreciate that, but I'm asking you to stop now.
All right.
Thank you, though. We, 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 we hear you. We have heard about it. It is being addressed. This board in general is trying to do what's best for the town as a whole, both for landowners and abusers regardless of where they live. Any situation that occurs throughout town, we take very seriously. And I can only promise you that that's one of the reasons why we're having a conversation tonight and we will continue to have a conversation. I understand your frustration, but we can't let it go down that path because that, no one's here to be able to answer any, any accusations or like, like alleged behavior. I'll just say that. But your point is well taken.
Like a trash.
Francisco, please, please.
I mean, I don't know.
I get it. I know, but we can't talk about it tonight.
All right.
Sorry. Alrighty. What, what else we got? So Andrew, do you have direction on this?
Got it.
Chief, LT, deputy chief, you guys good? All right. Um, oh, Mike.
Regarding item five.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a forum now.
Oh, yeah, you can do it. Yeah, can we do it right now, folks?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike, come on up. Or, or how do you wanna handle it? People can sit where they want, if, if they want comfortable. No, you can stay back there if you want. It's fine. Yeah, yeah, don't worry about it. All right, try this again. Mike, could you officially open your meeting?
Yes. Um, so this will be hosted meeting, the Charlton Housing Authority.
Thank you.
And, uh, we're glad to be here. Um, we have our members, Sue Regis.
Hey, Sue.
Hi.
And Ms. Babino.
Yes, Babino.
And, uh, myself, Mike Sullivan. And this is our candidate is Jonathan Cook.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Cook.
And, uh, so our request to you is to, um, well, first of all, follow this procedure correctly. Could I have a motion to ask the selectmen to appoint Jonathan to the board?
I'll make a select.
Second?
To select Jonathan for Charlton Housing.
Thank you. Second?
I second.
Okay, all was in favor?
Oh, actually, Mike, at this point, I'm sorry, we need to, uh, all right, just procedurally. So I'm gonna take that as a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Cook. And now we just need to do a roll call. We'll start with like our board, then we'll head over to yours, literally just one person at a time.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Singer.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. Sue?
Aye.
Ms. Babino? Done. It's good. Thank you so much.
Thank you for so much for your.
You are official now. Seriously, thank you so much volunteering. I think you're gonna, like, we really enjoy these folks.
And we've interviewed him and you people have known better than I do because he's such a town.
I've only been here 69 years.
That's it? Come on.
I've got more catching up to do.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Mike, can you just make a motion to like close your hearing?
Uh, make a motion to close the hearing?
Sue, Sue, can, can you say second? To like, to close the hearing. Thank you.
All in favor?
All right, you're good. Thanks, thanks, guys. And thank you for coming in, Sue.
Thanks for helping keep it on.
Mr. Cook, thank you again. Thanks, Mike.
I've got a question. Why can't you get in my handicap access?
What's that?
Handicap access doesn't work.
It's not working?
No.
She must have locked the door.
Oh, somebody may have locked the door. We will look into that immediately. Sorry, Sue.
I'll be come more often if I can get in.
Why do you think we locked it? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. All right, so welcome the board to correct me. I think we have all of our business done except for the next meeting announcement of our next regular meeting is September 10th, 2024. I believe we are going into executive session?
Yes.
Yes. So, so our, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So folks, our meeting is done. We're going to executive session. I don't think that, that, that we're coming out for any votes. So for all intents and purposes, we're done. I would love someone to read a motion.
Mr. Chair, I will read the piece of paper you gave me. I move to, uh, go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation police union. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, the chair so declares to return to open session if needed and to adjourn.
And the chair so declares. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I made the motion.
Second.
Discussion, hearing, none, roll call, vote. David?
Aye.
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 Steve, aye.
Excellent. We are in executive session. Thanks for coming out, folks. Matt, it's always been a pleasure.